Hey guys, welcome to Let's Talk About It Minut podcast. I'm your host, Rob Fuller. Jonathan Starr sitting here as always, the venerable sidekick.
That's right. So it'll be interesting today.
Should be a good, interesting, you love that word and I'll use it, I'll reiterate it. It should be interesting today.
I was trying to get you engaged, trying to make you happy.
Well, thanks, brah. Appreciate it.
Do you know Jack?
Big, big things happening all over the country, the state, not so much in the city or anything, but.
City's been pretty low.
City's been kinda quiet, you know?
Yeah, I mean, yesterday was interesting because we're at city council. You got called out.
Yeah, I had a gentleman come in that had been at my business over two years ago. Him and his family are in a, were in a fight with one of my employees. They kept coming on my property trying to serve him papers and creating basically discord at my frickin' business and, and, and you know, I get it. But after the third time it happened, I said, okay, enough is enough. And I just had, I spoke to the local PD and I had no trespass orders signed. And then if they came back to my business, I had no trespass them, right? Don't come back. It's a private business. It's a private property. And he's mad that I did that. And that's, he wants the video that shows him acting out for the reason I know trespass him. And I'm like, why are you talking to me about this? Like I'm, I'm sitting here trying to do city business. This is so far from city business. I don't get it, but it is what it is like.
Cause you guys had a busy night yesterday.
We did. We had a busy night.
A lot of things. There was declarations that were made, but where do we want to start? Maybe national? There's some headlines you saw.
Yeah, I think, what do you think? So in the last 24 hours, we've had three Supreme Court cases kinda decided for Trump. One, the Supreme Court said he can still deport illegal aliens using the enemy alien act of whatever year it was. Judge Roberts came out and said, he, Trump does not have to fly anybody back in that anybody, any judge is saying you gotta bring back. And three this morning or just a few minutes ago, they came out and said, let me read it here. If I can, US Supreme Court sides with Trump, halts reinstatement of all fired federal employees. So he can fire anybody he wants and he doesn't have to bring them back to work. I think that's good for, all three of those things I think are good for us as a, as a country and yeah, I mean, it helps the bloat in the federal government for sure.
Right. It does. Are you worried about the stock market at all right now?
No, I'm not. I mean, I think the stock market is overvalued anyway. Just because there's no way, if you look at how our stock market has climbed over the last 30 years. The, the way that, you know, you would see this, right? Just a steady climb, sometimes it'll, and then all of a sudden you see this flat and then it goes back up, you know, depending on what happens. So I, I think to a certain degree, the fact that it's coming down is okay. I don't think it hurts anything.
So it looks like China is trying to up their tariffs against the US.
China will be broken less than a year or so.
If you look at the numbers, Dow Jones is up today, S and P 500 is up today.
Do you know why it's up today? Did you see the five countries?
Yeah.
That came forward and said to Trump, yeah, to say five countries have come forward already and said, look, we'll drop all our tariffs to zero. You can send your stuff here. We won't question it. We'll send our stuff there. You know, India, Argentina, Vietnam, where we get so much stuff, you know, I mean.
That one's a huge one because they were talking about Vietnam with Nike and some of the big players like that. What's interesting is it's going to just, and we'll see the long-term effect. Okay. So for the people that hate terrorists, still here, yeah, we'll see what happens, but it's resetting the whole global trade market potentially.
It's, it's the largest, I saw a quote the other day from some bank guy in the, in the United Kingdom, UK. It is the largest reset of trade in the world since trade began, he said. Like this will change everything and it will change everything in a positive way for the United States. Which he said, how can you fault them for wanting to fix this? After 200 years.
Right. Yeah. How could you? Very interesting. Yeah. Did you, uh, did you follow the Marx madness at all?
I did, I did. I watched, I got home the other night, Saturday from, well, I had the district 38 reorg meeting in the afternoon. We went to church, came home, did something with the kids and then I sat down that night. We went down and saw the neighbors for a few minutes. Sat down that night. I got home with five minutes or two minutes left in the Duke game.
That was the best two minutes of the game.
And it's on the TV, you know, we walk in, I hadn't shut it off when we just walked over to see the neighbors, but walk in and I watched Duke pretty much pee it down their leg in the last two minutes. And I was like,
Bad deal.
What the heck, you know? And then obviously last night we had a marathon council meeting, so I didn't get to see the national championship.
Yeah, that was a, that was a good council meeting last night and it sounded like Houston found a way to lose, so.
Yeah. I mean, I saw the headline that said Florida pretty much spanked them, but I didn't see any game.
Came down, came down to the last possession technically and the, I saw that the Houston player tried to get a shot off. Then the defender came up, so he goes, let's go the ball. So that way he doesn't get it up and down, but he can't get the ball back. And none of his other teammates rallied fast enough. And so the game ended without a last heave.
Okay. So is that why you left the council meeting early last night? So you could go home and watch basketball?
I left the council meeting early so I could go to church.
Oh, fair enough. Okay. I won't, I won't fault anybody for that, I guess.
It was a good council meeting though.
Like we keep bringing up the council meeting in the, in the national stuff. We're gonna do that in the state stuff now too?
State stuff now.
What state stuff you wanna talk about?
When are we gonna get term limits at city level?
I don't know. I, we could implement it right now if everybody was agreed on it.
I know. I'm not, I've, I said that kiddingly, I'm not really trying to open that discussion.
But I think you're trying to make a point about the state term limits.
The state term limits was kind of interesting, the back and forth and how it's all played out. I think last podcast we thought that the attempt to.
Well, we thought it got shut down.
Yeah, this attempt to get it back on the ballot for a vote was shot down and we were wrong.
Yep. Uh, they, the five people that weren't there, um, plus one more, I think that had voted no already. On Wednesday all voted yes. So it passed like 49, 43. Does that sound right? Whatever it was.
Sounds right. So I was talking with somebody this past weekend and they do some lobbying. Dude, that's an interesting gig.
Oh, absolutely.
That would be hard. He, they were saying that, that you, they, you walk through the halls of the Capitol and you have a conversation with XYZ person and you make a point. And it's that same point that you make to that person that will lose you a vote with somebody else. And so then you have to go make, that's, that's not, I don't think I would be good at that.
Honestly, I, I believe in my mind and my heart that lobbyists are bad for our government, whether it be state, federal. I think we need to get rid of lobbyists because I mean, you look at our, let's just go to the federal level. I won't even pick on anybody in the state, but you look at how big tobacco, big pharma, all these guys lobby our legislators and how they vote, which isn't in accordance with what most people would probably want. You know, I, it just, I think it, uh, when, when they're giving legislators kickbacks, sending them on trips, buying them lunches, whatever it may be. And that's all legal, you know, they, they, they frame it through legal, yeah, legal ways. But I mean, you know, again, it's, it's just, it's nonsense. Like go down there, do the will of the people, not the lobbyists, do the will of the people and go home.
Try it out. Try it out.
No, with the term limits thing in the state, we talked about it last week. I'm, I'm honestly very disappointed in all the legislators in the state that voted yes, but specifically the six from Minut that voted yes. I know their argument is, oh, well, you know, we're gonna lose some of the institutional knowledge. We're gonna, um, you know, we could have 16 years, you know, it just have to go eight here, eight here. And I'm like, you're not guaranteed 16 years. You're guaranteed four years when you're elected. If you do a good job, you might get eight years in that house, right? Or in that chamber. But if you do a poor job, there's no way anybody's gonna elect you for the other four, eight years in the other chamber. So we're not promising them anything, right? We said, this is an option for you guys. But right in there, the, the biggest thing right in there, it says, the legislature is not allowed to try and undo this, overturn it or anything else. Now, their argument is, oh, well, we're asking the people just to relook at it. Well, you did this in the legislature and I, were you at the, the Saturday morning forum last Saturday?
Sadly, I was not at it.
Okay. Um, one of the legislators there, Jeff Halverson, because there was a lot of questions on these term limits things. Jeff Halverson got up and he said, hey, you guys are going directly against the people that voted us into office. I mean, and, and I applaud him for saying that because that is how the majority of the people in the state feel like, don't try and tell us, we didn't know what we were doing. Don't try and tell us, well, people were confused and they thought it was for, you know, federal term limits. That may have been the case to get it on the ballot, but when 153,000 people in the state vote yes for this, they were not confused. They were not unaware of what they were doing. You know, that's so disingenuous.
Right. So, yeah, yeah. I, I was sad to see it get back on there. I was sad to see the arguments too, or not arguments, but the statements that were made. If somebody said, this is a statement I would have been fine with. I don't know about the next person. If somebody said, and if the, uh, the amendment was based off this, that we've heard from our constituents that 12 years is better than eight.
Right. Okay. Which is what Governor Armstrong originally suggested. Let's do 12 years for the legislature in one chamber. And leave the eight years for all the other elected officials.
Yeah. So something like that. And that was, and that was the amendment then. And which is gives them more time, like they can serve 12 on both sides under that. I, I might would have been behind that, but this message that has been sent is we know better. And so we know that it should be 16. And it, in some ways it's more limiting, but the messaging behind it is really difficult for me to take, honestly.
It is. And, and so I had a conversation last Thursday after we did the podcast. One of the state legislators from Minot who voted yes on it, called me and wanted to talk about it. And so we talked about it for about two hours on Thursday night. And I understood his point and I understood where he was coming from, but what I said to him was this. Had you guys gotten together in the beginning and said, you know what? We know you guys said eight, we're asking for 16, maybe we could meet in the middle at 12. And these are the reasons why you lose this or you gain this or whatever, and, and give us a legitimate reason to maybe reconsider it. Instead of coming out and saying, you know what? You guys didn't know what you were doing. You were confused. You were this. You lost me as soon as you told me I didn't know what I was doing. Because if you think you know better than me, I, you know, and I understand it wasn't a group message, right? They were each saying their own messaging. One says, oh, this hurts me by not getting to do this. That concerns me right there because how are you hurt? By not doing a job that you volunteered to do? What is, what are you not gaining? That's a question that we should all have in our heads. Yeah. So.
I think also the messaging that has been around the property tax bills that have gone through has really hurt or has affected the procession of term limits as well. Because you're looking at property tax and the message was if you vote down measure four, we'll fix this.
We'll fix it.
And it hasn't gotten fixed and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. And so it's like, okay, yeah, you listened to us really well there. And now you wanna change term limits because you're gonna, you know better than us. Okay. Yeah. Hard to agree with that.
Well, and, and that's just the thing, like these are the reasons term limits need to be in place, right? You get these guys that have been in there for however long and they say, um, one thing and they rail against measure four and they promise they'll fix it. And then when it comes time to fix it, they laugh and they giggle like, oh, well, we can't enforce future legislative sessions to follow what we've said. So we can only do this and we can only do this and sorry, you have to live with it. Yeah. You guys are gonna be sorry in a couple of years. I, I honestly think that this bill is, uh, this measure is coming back. And the next time we're not gonna leave it in the legislature's hands. And I, I think the governor knows that. I think a few in the legislature know that. And, and so, I mean, they're basically cutting themselves off at the knees, right? But this is why term limits exist. When you tell the people you will do something and then you don't, let's go, you're done.
I've never been a fan of the governor's bills that was deemed, but the people that have ripped it the most have been people that are playing with the end of their term limits.
Right. I mean, and, and you know, I've heard from a couple of legislators down there that some of these guys that are in their last session aren't answering to people. They're, they don't feel beholden to anybody. They're like, you know what? If I'm done, I'm just gonna do whatever I want. And I, that to me, you know, that, that was one of the arguments like, well, if we don't have term limits, they don't act like that. And I said, doesn't it scare you that we have people down there that have that streak in them and that when they don't get their way? This is how they act. Yeah. That's why term limits need to be in place.
Yeah, that is. That it'll be interesting to be tracking. But term limits crazy.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, I, I hope, uh, because it doesn't go on the ballot this year. It goes on the ballot in 26. I hope people have a long memory for the next 24 months and make sure that we resoundingly tell them.
One thing though, that's scary is like what, what election happens at 26? Like there's not.
It's a midterm one.
And it, and we, I don't think either of our senators, cause we just did back-to-back elections for those. So I don't, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think either of our senators and we just let it, let it to our representatives. So probably not a representative either. Yeah. It's gonna, there's no major election going on in North Dakota. That can be bad.
Well, it could be. I mean, you know, voter turnout, um, and, and we've talked about this, whether it be in the city or in the state. We need better voter turnout, you know? I mean, I understand people are busy. I understand, um, life takes over sometimes, but you have to get out and vote, folks. You gotta, yeah, sorry, I'm in the middle. Um, you gotta, uh, you gotta get out there and make sure that you're doing your civic duty. And I don't say that very often, but do your civic duty and go vote. You can't affect any change if you don't go vote.
Yeah. So absolutely. Uh, bell to bell school ban or bell to bell, uh, cell phone ban comes back. That's gonna be interesting. I'll see what happens there.
For the most part, the schools do it right now, like up at Bishop Brian where my kids are, even though they don't have cell phones during the day. All the older kids that have cell phones gotta put them in a, in a little bag, stick them in their locker and they can't take them out.
Yeah. So did your boys enjoy being at city council yesterday?
They had fun last night. Yeah. They had fun. I mean, it was really, you know, they're just getting into the age where sports are really becoming a big thing in their lives. Baseball and, and basketball. And so them getting to go in there and see the boys at Bishop Brian where they go to school that just won the state championship. That was pretty big for an eight-year-old and a six-year-old kid.
Yeah. I saw your oldest getting in there trying to give some bumps or high fives.
He's high fiving nucks, you know? So we had one of the, uh, one of the tickets left over, um, because my son Teague, the, the night, the championship that Saturday night, he didn't use his ticket. So we had the ticket and it had the date on it and it said, you know, Bishop Brian, all that. And, and I was like, Trip, you know, it'd be really neat. Take this in there and see if the boys' basketball team, all the guys that won the championship will sign the back of it for you. I said, then you will have a memento of this day, where you know exactly when and who was on the team. And he's like, oh, that's a great idea, dad. And so he was out in the lobby while we were kinda in there getting ready. He was out in the lobby getting signatures and everything on the back and he brought it back in. He's like, look dad, I got them all. I even got some that weren't basketball players and I, you know, I, and coaches and stuff like that, but they had a good time. And, um, I, I, I was, uh, I obviously asked before I let the boys up on the dais with me for that part. I, I just wanted to make sure and, and both Harold and, and Mark were like, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's fine. Yeah. You know, I mean, it's the little things like that, right?
It is.
So anyway.
That's neat. That's neat. Well, city council was a doozy.
City council was a doozy last night. Marathon session and boy, was there a lot of things to talk about.
Three proclamations to get us started. And that, just based off that, you knew it was gonna be a long one.
Well, I mean, little did everybody know, there was actually a fourth proclamation on there that they pulled off and said, we'll put that on the next council meeting.
Yeah, just too much.
Yeah. I think it was Arbor Day. So they weren't really worried about, you know, as long as we do it before Arbor Day, that's okay.
Yeah. Makes sense. Yeah. Um, yeah. Going through the sequence of events in my mind, one of the big things that came, that was early was the police, the presentation with this flock software. Obviously there was a great discussion around civil liberties and all that. But even before you step into that, it was something that I mentioned on our live stream. There was a different feeling. Okay. And that, and I, I, I don't know that you need to comment much on it, but I don't know when it's gonna go away. I don't know if it goes away after we finally have our mayor elected for a year. So full, full-term mayor, but not full-term mayor, you know? I don't know if it goes away.
A nine-month mayor and then redo it again?
Right. I don't, I don't know if it goes away then because it will still feel like we still have another election coming.
Well, let me ask a question before you keep going. What feeling did you get from the chamber and like, I guess, what, after you define the feeling, why do you think it's there?
Yeah. So the feeling was just like unease. It felt like, I mean, if you really wanna know, it felt like mom and dad were gone.
You know, like tension, like the kids were fighting?
It's not that the kids are fighting. It's just that mom and dad are gone. So the oldest is in charge or, you know, in the, in the family environment. I'm not meaning that on the dais, like let me make that very clear. But in the family environment, you know, the oldest sibling's in charge and you're like, yeah, but I don't have to listen to you. Like, is that really what mom and dad would say? And all that changes once, you know, in the real world example here, you have the council president who by default, nobody actually put him in that position. There was a unanimous decision like, yeah, we'll do it, but we're gonna figure this out in 15 days. And now there's the special election talk. It just felt like there was just a little bit of an uneasyness or whatever.
I still think.
Can I add one more thing? I wanna say, like, I, I felt that more on the, I don't know that, that was the, truly the feeling on the dais. Okay. I wanna make sure that that was my feeling in the crowd of like, who's actually, we don't really, I get that you're sitting there, but who's actually gonna be in charge? You know, like we're still in this in-between.
I think people in the community have questions. I, I think there's some unease, right? I mean, we're just a week removed from having to remove our mayor or having our mayor resign for abhorrent behavior. Um, you know, so I, I get that. I, I think you're right. There might be a little concern or like, hey, what's gonna happen next? You know, everybody, everybody always has strong feelings about change and about uncertainty. And I, and I think both of those things are going on right now within the city. And so I, I think the general public is feeling that a little bit and.
Yeah. So that's probably what it comes down to and it'll all get sorted soon enough. But the, one of the first big things on the deal was the police, um, looking at this flock. So what, what do you think of the system?
Well, I think it has its useful purposes, but as Alderman Blessam said, how do we balance safety for civil liberty? Right? And, you know, it would be one thing, and I think Alderman Samuelson was the one who said it, you know? He didn't realize that you didn't have to actually have a license plate number. You could have a partial license plate number and a, um, description of the car. And you can put that information in there and then have it start finding things. That isn't specific.
Right.
Right? That isn't specific. That is general. And then like I had asked, um, Chief Blessus, I said, you know, even if we have a policy in place, are we gonna use this? Say we find somebody who was committed a crime. Are we gonna use it to try and go back and see if they've committed other crimes? And even if we say we're not, is the state's attorney beholden to that same thing? Because I think they could take the video and use it for whatever they want as well. And, and so that's where my concern comes in, like, how do we put something into place? And I think Mike said it perfectly. We're not ever gonna realize how bad this is until something happens. And that's when, you know, then it's already too late. So what do you do? Like, I don't know. I, I wanna give the police every advantage that they need because we're short-staffed and the people that are down there are good people. I, I want them to have everything they need, but I'm not sure this is the right option.
This is definitely hard, cause from a, if we were in a high crime area, I think the conversation on this would have went differently.
Yeah. Well, and, and one person's, you know, I, I, I don't remember who it was. One person said, well, every time you walk into Walmart, you're on camera. And every time you do this, you're on camera. Right. But Walmart can't use that to indicate somebody did a crime. They can't point at a person and say, hey, you know what? He did this or they did that. You're never gonna get in trouble just from walking on the Walmart camera. Hell, even if you steal from Walmart, they're just gonna be like, let them go, right? They don't even call the cops.
Yeah. And I think also a difference between it is like, that's a private business where you are surrendering your rights when you walk into that place. Whereas when you're around your city, you don't feel, you don't have as as much of an option there. Like you wanna go for a walk in the park? You wanna go for a walk in the park? You know, you wanna go for a drive around town, which would be more applicable. You wanna go for a drive around town. It did, it did not track speed or whatever. So to be clear, this was just simply for tracking cars.
They would set it up. Yeah. It will not track speed, but in other places, the system is in place and they do have those add-ons, right? Their add-on modules to everything. So you can use it as a red light runner, like in Colorado when I lived out there. They started putting them on the lights. And if you, if you went through the light and it was red, snapped your picture and they mailed you a ticket. That isn't legal in North Dakota yet.
Right.
But will it be someday?
And that's, my concern on the topic is really, I think overall I'm fine with the software as is. I'm more concerned about the door opening because where is it going to end? And that's where I would be opposed to it most likely.
Well, and, and again, you know, I mean, and I'm not saying there's bad actors still or anything like that, but it just takes one person to go in there and abuse the system. And then all of a sudden, what do we do? We spent the money and then we're gonna rip it out and say, you know what? We told you or whatever the case may be. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. That was a definitely interesting, interesting deal there.
Well, and I mean, let's see what the policy is. And that's why we tabled it. I mean, you know, there's three of us or four of us that have questions, but let's see what the policy you come up with is and see if we can maybe get there, right? It's, it's not a no. It's a, how do we get to yes? Right? Let's see if we can get to yes. So.
What's the solution for childcare in Minut?
I don't know. I mean, I had a, an email this morning from somebody that was, was upset that I voted against the, the property tax exemption for childcare centers. And, and I said, look, here, here's where I have my issue. I don't understand government's role in childcare or trying to do this because number one, let's say we give the exemption. The daycare centers, whatever building they're in, the landlords are under no obligation to pass that savings on to the, the childcare places, right? They're under no obligation to do that. And then second, like, and then using the example I used with the building I own. If I were to get a tax exemption of $5,400 and the business is paying me $48,000 a year with that and they pay me $43,000 a year minus that, how are they, how does that make it cheaper for you to go out and get daycare? Now, have they promised like, I'll give five spots of free daycare every month for the whole year to make up for that? Or we're gonna, we're gonna give money to, more money to our employees or everything else. I haven't heard any of that. So how does it, how does doing that make it cheaper? And then third, I think 90% of us would agree that the reason there aren't more spots in our daycares is because our workforce shortage in Minut, North Dakota.
It's all tied together.
Right? I mean, so show me how that me saying that daycare or that church that has a daycare and it doesn't have to pay property tax makes the childcare cheaper.
The thing that has stood out to me is that they keep talking about how margins are so tight. And so if you did get, if your business where your margins are tight and you get 5,000 bucks, your first reaction is not gonna be to.
Well, $5,000, if, if $5,000 is make or break is your business, you're probably not gonna survive anyway.
That's the first point. Yeah. And then on top of that, if you made five, when you make $5,000 more in your business, your first reaction is not, oh, I should give her, well, it's not, I should hire employee. And the second thought may or may not be, I should give a raise. Maybe it'd be like, we could give a little bit of a bonus or something at the end of the year. There could be something like that, but not something consistent.
So here, let's just use some random numbers. Okay. We'll say I'm just pulling these out of the air. You have a daycare that has 45 kids. And they charge a thousand dollars a kid. Let's just use round numbers. $45,000 a month, $510,000 a year, right? So a half a million dollars a year that daycare brings in. Now, almost all of their food on these larger daycare centers is subsidized through the state. So they buy it, get money back from the state or get the money from the state to go buy it. So you have two expenses as a daycare. You have your labor or your employees and you have your mortgage and/or lease. Okay. So let's say your mortgage is like mine and out of that $510,000, $48,000 of it goes to me. Okay. So now you're down to 400 or five, 460,000 roughly, right? You're down to 460,000 and half of that is your wages. $230,000. So you still have a profit of $230,000. Now there will be some minor expenses in there. But I don't consider a business making a hundred thousand dollars a year to be a thin margin.
Right. Yeah. Right. So even if you had another $130,000 in expenses. Which would be, seems like could be a lot.
You made a hundred thousand.
You still made a hundred thousand.
Yeah. That's a pretty good living. After you paid all your expenses. So again, I, I just, I don't know that it's government's role to step in and try and subsidize this because as we were kinda getting at too, what's next then? The next thing that we have to subsidize because they can't find enough employees or because it's too expensive, you know? Are we gonna have to start subsidizing groceries for everybody because it's so expensive to buy groceries? You know, there, there's things that is private business world and economy that has nothing to do with the government stepping in.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, no, I, I think that private business is best when it's left to private business. But I also, this is a unique problem. And the only reason why it's a unique, the reason why it's a unique problem to me is because of how it does tie into directly to workforce shortage. Where I've mentioned it like, you know, maybe we should have more one come households, but if you really go down that path, then. But if you really go down that path, then you lose all 10 policemen or you lose a bunch of nurses or you lose.
We have to want to see Minot grow, right? Right now Minot is shrinking again. We want to see Minot grow. The only way we can do that is to reinvest in our own economy, right? Build houses, help businesses that are here, stay here or not closed. I mean, those are the things we got to do and that's what creates more workforce.
Right. So speaking of helping businesses stay here, you guys had a not heated, but intense discussion on the idea of giving preference to local contractors. There was a distinction that was made by finance director, Dave Lakefield. We had him on a podcast. He's fantastic. He's so smart. I couldn't ask very good questions. He was too smart for me. So, but anyways, so there's a difference. We already have a policy in place for services, for goods. We do not have a policy in place for services essentially.
Yeah.
Probably a little bit too simplified, but just go with it. So the, what that means is when there's two, since we've talked about paving on this podcast before, when there's three people that are looking to pave a road, we don't have a policy necessarily in place. Like there's a policy that is referred to, but it's not directly for services and how that bid is awarded. It's just lowest bid.
Yep.
So there's potential that there could be.
It's not. It's governed by the states and the state says
That's right.
The best and most reliable bid. It doesn't say lowest. It says best and most reliable bid.
Cause but lowest bid, I am a believer that lowest bid is not always the best bid.
Well, there's, I, I, and one of the things, and I think you guys touched a little bit on it this morning in your podcast. I wish, but one of the things you talk about is the lowest bidder. And are there a bunch of change orders and add-on things as they go? Inevitably, inevitably that happens and you see the bid close to where the other bid would have been.
Okay. So basically, yeah, let's get into this discussion. Basically, one of the ideas that was represented on Minot Talk every morning, every Tuesday at nine AM was
Shameless plug.
That's right. That's all we do anymore. Was that you could go and I've talked with people that were, that design build firm. The way that they do their bidding is that they say, all right, and I've, there's, it's actually a model. I don't know what the model is called, but it's, all right, it's going to cost us to, our firm, our cost is $200,000. You're going to pay us $200,000 to be the firm for this project. We estimate the high end number will be this. It will not go above this number. It could go below that number though. So you know how much you're paying them and you know how much they basically estimate the cost of the project to be.
Right.
And it will not go above that number.
Right.
Like it seems like that would be almost a more effective way of bidding.
Well, it
And they've bid in Minot projects and they've lost because that's their style and Minot says, no, that's not how we want it.
Well, and again, I'm not in any way, shape or form, when I bring this up, suggesting that we have to give a bid to a local contractor. But as I said last night, there's thousands of cities across this country that have these policies in their, in their procurement and bid packages. And if that, if it's such a bad policy, why is that a thing? Right? I mean, again, if we come to a bidder and he says, you know what? You were in five, within 5%, do you want to match the lowest bid?
I love this idea.
Do you want to match the lowest bid? And you can have the job. Again, we're not saying we have to pay more, but we give a deference to the local contractors because they're the people paying the taxes into the city. And for us not to reinvest that money back into our own community to help economic growth and, and drive growth makes zero sense. And, and again, we're not talking about $30 million flood control jobs, like anything with federal money. We can't do this on, right? Federal money indicate dictates you have to take the lowest bid regardless of what you think.
Crazy.
Right? Well, look at our government. They pay the lowest amount for everything, right? $500 hammers, $1,000 toilet seats.
It's crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
But so it just, it just gives the option. So if you're talking about, and these are jobs between 500,000 and say 2 million a year. And maybe two to five jobs a year. And maybe one of those jobs would be affected by this local contractor preference. How is that a bad thing? Like, I, you know, and, and I had this conversation because Alderman Pittner pushed back at me a lot. And I had a conversation with him afterwards and I said, so we're okay with spending 10 to 20 million dollars over budget on every flood control project and we don't blink an eye. We're, those are tax dollars. We're okay taking more tax dollars and putting them into the facade program and Renaissance districts for local small businesses. We're taking tax dollars and benefiting those businesses, but we're not okay making sure that our local contractors are on an even playing field with some of the big guys, right? Because if you're a $500 million company and you've got people working in Fargo on flood control and Minnesota on flood control and everywhere else, you can go to Minot that year and you can say, you know what? I'm willing to take a little bit less because there's not a lot of work and I want to keep my guys busy.
Right.
And all that does is crap on the local guys that have been doing the work for the last 10 years. And I don't think that's a fair thing, you know, and, and my dad and I, we were actually talking about this about two hours ago. And he didn't agree with me. And I said, Dad, if it's not a thing, then help me understand, how does Walmart? Like if, if the big contractors
Right.
don't have more give in their budgets and everything else, how does Walmart sell everything cheaper than marketplace foods? I said, they got more buying power. They have more control. And I said, those are the same things that happen in these instances with these big companies, you know? The only reason Wagner Construction is in Minot, North Dakota is for flood control and they do some DOT work. And again, I'm not, I'm not bagging on Wagner. I'm just using them as an example. They're an out of state firm. Sure. They hire some local people, but a lot of them travel with the company, right? So
Yep.
They're an out of state firm. And I would just like to see our local contractors. This year, what they did was there's no DOT work. There's mainly, there's very little roadwork going on with the DOT. They're doing bridges this year, which are completely different contracts. And the flood control stuff is kind of slowed down a little bit because we're waiting to see what happens with the money. We're waiting for some of the, you know, out of the winter, you can't do anything. So all of a sudden Wagner's like, well, we don't have any work. And they go around and they start gobbling up all the local contracts for the local bidders to keep their people busy.
Yeah.
Again, not a bad thing, but it's wholly unfair, I, I believe to some of the local bidders and contractors.
They want to even be here.
Right.
That's the thing is if it was a new, like fair markets, fair market, right? But they're, they're, we're creating an avenue for them to be here. And then when that avenue is a little bit slow, then they're going and creeping into.
Taking the jobs that our locals are working.
They don't really want.
Nope.
They're just getting them so they can survive.
Easier to do that than to pack up all your people and send them home for the year and move them to other jobs.
Right.
And so again, I'm not simply saying that we need to give it. But for anybody that wants to argue with me that taking local tax dollars and putting them back into the economy to our local businesses so they can grow, so they can pay their employees, so they can hire more people, doesn't understand the economy. And I'll sit down with them any day and have that discussion.
Yeah. It was, it was an interesting one on the dais.
Yeah. We don't always agree up there if you haven't noticed.
No, that's, it's crazy. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. The, what I don't know is the question I was going to ask or go to engage in this other one. And I had a really good one. Cause we'll never know it. So I promise you it's really good.
Come back to it. When we start talking about something else, you'll think about it.
That's when I'll be there. Yeah. I mean, there was a lot to talk about though.
There was. We, oh, we covered a lot of things. I mean, you know, I, and again, I only, I pulled three.
I know what it was.
Oh.
Cause you're going to go to it. One of them was the flood control.
Yep.
And, and how does this bid process work? Because it seems like there's some contractors that get used a lot, which doesn't seem like that'd be possible.
There's two contractors in Minot doing flood work, Park Construction and Wagner Construction. I mean, we might use some local guys to do little, like they may get subbed out to hire a local, you know, to move some dirt or something like that. But overall, the big flood control projects are going to Wagner and Park.
Does that same policy apply to like surveyors, to engineers, to like across the board with all those service type service?
I would imagine we would, that's, we want to see it work that way in all instances, right? Not just this one or this one, but in all instances again, and it's going to be minimal. It, it's going to be specific infrastructure projects that don't use any federal tax dollars that are between 500,000 and $2 million. And, and so, you know, again, we're not talking about a ton of money. And we're also talking about giving them the opportunity to match the lowest bid to see if they can do it for that.
Right. Yeah. Because we also don't want preference giving between, preference given to two con, uh, between two local contractors either. And it feels like sometimes there's certain contractors that go order jobs more often. Maybe they're always the lowest, but.
Well, again, we're, we're very limited. And as I said last night, we're very limited with the number of contractors we have in Minot, North Dakota, right? A lot of them have closed up shop, retired, whatever it may be, because so if we keep going down that route, we're not going to have any local contractors before long.
Yeah, that would not be healthy. So moving on.
Okay. Next thing.
Next thing. Well, I think it's a good time for public discussion. There, there was, there was a lot. There's a lot.
There was a lot of public comments last night. There was.
The most since I've been tracking it.
Has it really?
Cause I was like five or six. I'm not.
Yeah. There was a number of people that got up.
There, there may have been one or two times more, but that was one of the most.
Yeah.
But the, obviously everyone had good things to say, but there was one that was going to have a potential, potentially have an impact on the city. And that was Josiah Royce.
Yep.
He, he says that he has garnered enough signatures to, for a special election in Minot. So that's, that's the first thing. Obviously, I, I mean, I mentioned on the, uh, Minot Talk today, I, I don't want a special election. Do, do you feel like this is the best thing? Do you feel like a special election is best thing for Minot right now? If you can answer.
So in my personal opinion, right? Again, as a city council member, what the will of the people is, is what the will of the people is. I hope that if that's the direction we go, they make an informed decision instead of just a mob mentality decision, which seems to kind of be what's happening. But personally, I don't think that a special election is the best thing. Cause let's, let's just play this out a little bit. Okay. So we get 500 signatures or whatever he said he got to do the special election. The special election, the earliest we could have it is July 20th, right at the start of the fair. I don't believe we're going to have a special election during the fair. So that pushes us now to August. Let's say we do it the first week of August, right after the fair is over type thing.
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
So have the special election and by the end of the month, we know the results. So that person will serve basically from September 1st through the end of the year, which is what? Four months, September, October, November, December, four months. And then five more months, the following year. And then they have to do the same thing again, where we're going to elect another person to do it. I just think, because all of us up there that are already elected, like we've been elected and I know not everybody voted for every person on the dais. I, I get that. I'm not saying that, but we've all been elected by a majority of the people to be up there. The person we were talking about elevating to the mayoral position for the interim has there been our longest serving
Right.
council member. So again, I, and I think I posed this question at one other point. If you don't like the person that we're going to elevate, why have you been voting him in for the last 16 years, right? I mean, it's kind of a, a silly question, but I mean, anyway, so we do that. Is the outcome that we're going to see and receive a nine-month mayor worth the 20,000? I, I don't know. I, to me it's not because we could do a certain other things with that. And I get the, the people's will is the people's will, but how do you, do they have a candidate?
Right.
You know, I, I know Josiah said last night, he's going to run. He's going to be a constitutional mayor and that's great. I, I, I get that. I, and if he wants to get out there and run and, and do his civic duty, I think that's fantastic.
Like Kyler said, we'll host a debate, man. So.
Who's he running against?
Yeah. Well, we're, we've got some ideas.
We haven't even, I, you know, if, if the election is a thing, like if they say, hey, we got the signatures, special election is required. Right now we have one candidate, right? I don't know if, if anybody on the council, yeah, let's just use Mark. I don't know if Mark's going to want to go out and campaign and get signatures and do all that.
It's going to be a lot of work. It's not that it's just a lot of work. It's a lot of stuff that you weren't anticipating doing. That's the biggest deal with it.
Yeah.
Is you know that running for mayor is a lot of work, period.
Well, and it's a, it's a lot of work after you get in there too, you know? I mean, there's a lot of obligations for the mayor.
Right. And so it, if you weren't planning on doing it, it just seems like it's a huge sacrifice.
Well, and again, it's one thing to be asked to step up and just do it.
Right.
It's another thing to say, hey, go get your signatures, get on the ballot, spend money, get your signs, get everything, you know? That's going to be prohibitive because also it's not like you have a year. You basically have three months, you know, you got a month to get your signatures and then you have a month campaign, month and a half campaign, and then you got to vote.
Right.
So I don't know. I mean, again, the people want what the people want, but you know, the, the folks that are screaming for the, the public election or the mayoral election and everything, because they want to say, they want to say, you've had a say. You've, you've had a say every time. I want to see from all those people that have been screaming for this. How many of you voted in the last two elections?
Right.
How many of you actually went out and voted instead of just screaming for discontent and, and chaos in the community? How many of you actually went out and voted? Like, help me understand this. Because I hear from a lot of people, more people than that have told me that we should have an election. I've heard from more people that we shouldn't. What a waste of money, you know what I mean? So where do you go from there?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Crazy stuff for sure.
Yeah.
So you mentioned the second part, part of Josiah's statements where he said that he was going to run. So that's interesting. We already have one candidate.
Yeah.
We will.
Well, does he have his signatures?
We don't. So it's not official, official deal, but yeah. It's not even official that we have a special election yet.
Well, no, you know, I mean, if, if he got his five, the 500 signatures, they turned it in. I don't know how long it'll take the county to basically say, hey, we have to have a special.
People that are going to be turning the signatures too, from what we've heard.
I know Tuttle was out there. Charles Tuttle was out there getting signatures. I, I think the whiners and complainers group, they were, they had some petitions going around. So.
That's what's irritating about this to me is that you have, like, I don't remember the last time. And that's not even the point of it. I won't, I won't fully go down that road, but my point is like getting 300 signatures. It just takes one person to say, you know what?
Yeah.
Let's do it. And the way by current law, the way to get over that Minot is to get out and vote.
Yeah.
Because the more people that vote, the higher that number that goes.
Yeah. Right. To, to get 293 signatures to, you know, that's because we only had 4,600 people come out and vote last time.
Right.
I mean, if, if we had 15,000 people come out and vote, that signature, that would be a lot higher. So I mean, shame on everybody that doesn't go vote.
Right. Yep. That's the biggest deal. That's the biggest deal. So, uh, yeah, it's going to be interesting looking forward. I mean, it, it, I am looking forward to the next few months because it's going to be a lot of fun.
It is, but the problem with it ultimately becomes, so now we are a council of six. Because we can't do anything until the mayor is put in place and then we can backfill whoever spot it is, right? If, if it's one of us on the council or something like that. So we're a council of six and we can't go fill that spot until after the mayoral thing is decided. So what happens if we get three to three ties? You know, I mean, it just, it makes us a less effective body.
Does this change? Cause you guys gave some direction on the budget process. Will this change your guys' view of it?
I don't think so. I, I mean, you know, the budget process is the budget process. We have to go through it, whether there's six of us there or seven of us there, you know?
You guys weren't going to have us in-depth tours though.
Well, the tourist thing, you know, I, and I said last night, you know, I don't think we need to do the dog and pony show. And, and I wasn't being sarcastic, you know? But at, and last year was great because we were new, new council members. And so it was good to see some of those things. But now, you know, all of us have been on there a year. We understand the process. I would rather sit down with a department head and say, hey, this is what we need, right? Can you, how do we get to this? You know, you know, and help them understand or help me understand their budgeting a little bit more. Rather than go walk through this facility and walk through that facility. I know what the facilities look like. I tend to go to them quite a bit right now, you know, and do different things when we have discussions. So that was my only point there. I don't want the staff to have to waste two hours this day or three hours this day. They're busy. They have a lot going on. And, and I think that just having, being able to sit down and have conversations across the table with them is a better use of their time and of our time.
Yeah. Very good. Well.
And, and even the city manager said, I stole his thunder by saying that.
Yeah, for sure. So I, I think it's a, it's going to be a good deal.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, it'll be, it'll be interesting to watch everything play out. Unfortunately, you know, we have to do this, right? After everything that's happened and it's, it's sad, but you know, we'll get past it. We'll have a fresh start and we'll be a stronger Minot for it.
That we will be.
So.
That we will be. Well.
What else you got? Anything else? That was it?
I think we hit the bottom, man.
Wow. We covered it all then.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks for joining us on the Let's Talk About It Minot Podcast. We'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.